Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 3, 2023, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, I'll call the meeting to order and open with our, by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. For announcements tonight, unfortunately, we start off with the very sad announcement of the passing of Paul Labby. Paul was known to everybody, loved by everybody, such a great member of this community, served on our planning board, served in a really big way on the Hatfield 350th in organizing the parade, and was just such a joy to work with, was involved in the Lions Club and a lot of other community organizations. So we just really wanted to acknowledge his passing and, you know, give our condolences to his family. Did you say you had something else?
Yeah, just, I mean, Paul was the voice of Hatfield. He was.
He was.
His humor will be missed. So, moving on to the next subject is, it's October, and it's usually a good time for you to check your smoke detectors, check your batteries, and check your heating systems for the coming winters. So I just want to bring that up to remind people to make sure that their smoke detectors are in good working order and batteries are replaced.
You know what? Just one more thing. Paul was so, such an important part of Luminaryum. You know, really the nicest knight here in town, and he was always the, sort of, the leader of the pack up on the stairwell and...
And he was a parade marshal for years.
He was the parade, he did the parade.
Every Memorial Day in town for probably the last 50 years.
And all the good parties. Paul was, yeah, Paul was there for all the good stuff, so we're gonna miss him. He was a great, great guy. Did you have anything? Okay. Is anyone here for public forum? Okay, so first order of business will be the approval of our minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 19, 2023.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Because we are expecting our West Street residents at 5:45, we'll move ahead with just a couple of agenda items. Let's go right to the DPW report, Phil.
So the only thing in front of us tonight is the authorization for the sewer and water bill and commitment for FY24, number one for collection.
I don't have any questions about this, anybody? Pretty straightforward.
No.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Okay.
You wanted to make a motion?
Oh, yeah. Would you like me to?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY24 commitment, number one, water in the amount of $427,525.27, sewer in the amount of...
That's actually $472,000.
Oh, $472,525.27, and sewer in the amount of $369,177.27, for a total commitment of $841,702.54.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Phil. Marlene, do you want to take up the, your, your report?
Sure, I'd be glad to. So currently before the legislature is a House Bill 3852, which is an act that supports electrical load aggregation programs in, in the Commonwealth. And the Department of Public Utilities is seeking a petition to change the aggregation and the authority or power and authority that municipalities would have. So, you know, this, this letter of support would ask the legislature to, to support the aggregation programs and not reduce or restrict, restrict what is being proposed by DPU.
Okay.
So if we, if the town wanted to amend its current agreement aggregation, we'd have to petition, file or petition the DPU to, for an amendment. So it'd be a lengthier process to do, to do that.
I see.
And as you know, we, we have an agreement with Colonial Power Group. The new rates will be going into effect in December for the billing period beginning January. So customers who participate, I know this is, will be going out in, in a few weeks to all the customers. So if anybody has any questions, they can call me about that.
Okay.
Anyway, just for the board's action tonight is a letter to support the, the bill.
Okay. Do you have any questions or anybody?
No.
Ed?
That's good.
No, I'll make a motion to support the bill, and that would be, trying to find it here, which number it is. House number 3852.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome. The next item is, is just a very brief update. At previous board's meeting, you had before you a memorandum of understanding with the city of North Hampton for the Connecticut River Walkway, and we had anticipated receiving that back and taking that up this evening. But I understand the city's attorney is looking at the MOU.
Okay.
So maybe our second meeting this month will have that back on the agenda.
Sounds good. Yep.
Note, that covers the items for now. We do have an executive session later at the end of the meeting, so that is it for now.
Okay, great. Cindy, you didn't happen to come in for public forum. Oh, well, you know, we have a few minutes, so come on up.
I have a procedural question. Last night I attended the school committee meeting.
Can't hear her. Can't hear her.
Okay.
Last night I attended the school committee meeting. They are looking to put a pickleball court behind Pleasant Few Drive between North Street and all that. And I had asked someone here at the town hall what the next procedure was, because they were supposed to vote on it last night. They did not. Okay, so they did not vote on whether to approve to put it there or not. I was told by somebody here that after it went there, it would go to the Select Board and the Planning Board. But last night they announced, no, that's not how it goes. It goes, they have it, then it goes to a rec committee and then the Select Board. So I wanted to know what the procedure was for the next steps so that we can prepare.
Okay. Good question. This is regarding the courts, the proposed courts?
Yeah.
My understanding, there is a draft memorandum of, memorandum of agreement or understanding that the school is, is working on.
Yes.
And I have been in contact with the school superintendent, but I haven't received any updates.
No, they're, well, as of last night, they were still making adjustments to the MOU.
Okay.
However, what is the next step?
I think she's asking beyond that.
Beyond that, yeah.
Once it leaves the school committee's hands.
Right.
Where does it go for approval, for disapproval, for whatever?
What I have communicated to the school superintendent is just internal communications. I felt because it is town property and the Select Board oversee town property, as much as it would be on the school's property, that not only should the, the school committee and whoever's going to represent the, the pickleball league, if it's going to be under the recreation, I have reached out to the Recreation Commission Chair, and I also suggested to the superintendent that we should have legal counsel take a look at it, whether it's their legal attorney or the town's legal attorney. So like I said, I haven't received any more information.
So does it go to another board for approval, like the Planning Board or the Select Board? Say they, they pass, they approve it, where does it go next?
I don't know about the Planning Board.
Or why it would go to the Planning Board.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Shouldn't come here.
But I, I would expect that the Select Board would have some involvement in it.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, all I know right now. But my understanding is, so the, the league, the pickleball league has been working with the Recreation Commission, and, and they support the, you know, the sport. However, the Recreation Commission is appointed by the Select Board. So I, it's just not clear to me who's going to oversee this. Is it going to become a new recreation program within the towns?
Yeah, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there, there is like nowhere to go, you know, because just going back to town meeting, I was really disappointed because I was waving my arms in the back of the room to be recognized to speak on it. I ran to the center aisle, waving my arms six feet across and didn't get called on because I was disappointed that something came to the town floor without a, a plan. I don't, I couldn't understand why it was on there. They didn't have a location, they didn't know who was going to pay for it, they didn't have an organization, they didn't know, you know, who was going to handle any monies, who was in charge, who would be liable if somebody got sued or hurt.
Yeah.
Who would, you know, there was nothing on there except, oh, can we have $400,000? And I wanted to say, let's table, you gotta bring some improvement. There was no estimates, and so somebody pulled the $400,000 out of the sky. There's no, in knowing site workers in the building in two, five years, it's gonna be more than double that, so.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I had questions about the MOU and, and so...
I haven't seen an MOU yet.
Well, they said they were still working on it, you know, they had the draft, but like I said, we, there's a, there's a group that wants to prepare, you know, legal counsel, et cetera. And so I just want to know who our communications go to, what's the next step?
Our last discussion on it was first getting a place to put it.
Hmm.
That was the first step.
Yeah.
So I guess if everybody's approving it up there, I guess we can find out what the next step would be.
The summer, the school worked with, with...
I don't know, I'm trying, I was trying to make this really short, but so where it, say gets approved, okay, or it doesn't get approved, either, there's two tracks it can take. What is the next board that we go to?
It would come here.
Yeah, I, when you say approve, when what gets approved?
If they approve that for the site, for the site.
That site? Well, my understanding is there's a pretty strong understanding between the school and that pickleball league to let them use that spot, that location behind the school. My understanding, they have come to an agreement to use that space.
Well, they were supposed to vote on that, whether they could or not last night, and they chose not to.
Okay. I know they are working out the terms of, of the agreement still, and it was sent to me and...
I have, I have questions about it, too.
Yeah.
About who enters into that agreement?
Absolutely.
Like, why would a...
Well, is it, I'm, I'm wondering if it's, it's like for the town or for the area, because a friend of mine has tried to get time where they are now, that lives in town, and she says, if you see the list, there's people as far east as Belcher Town, people as far south as Connecticut, and she can't get time to play on it. So we're gonna spend all this money for people from even out of state to play on it, because, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think the school could use the money better than that, but, you know, for them, instead of out of town, out of state, out of town, you know? That's what the taxpayer pays for.
Well, when it comes back here, we can add.
When you find out, can you find, you know, where it's gonna go next? Because whether they approve it or not, where the appeals, where the, you know, the objections will go to?
Yes.
Okay? Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Cindy. Thanks. And you helped us fill six minutes.
Perfect, 5:45.
Okay, so it is 5:45. Welcome, West Street residents. We're glad that you're joining us tonight. The purpose of tonight is to get a progress update on the project, which has been somewhat slow. So who's, who's gonna be taking the lead on, on addressing this? You should probably come up to the mic. Thanks.
Michael All with Comprehensive Environmental. We're the engineer on the project. And as people have noticed, progress has been slow since the contractor remobilized to the site on West Street. The initial few weeks, really the contractor was waiting for the new dewatering system to...
Can everybody hear him? Can you hear him?
Is that good?
If you could speak loud.
Sure.
It's, that's not a microphone, that's for the camera, so I know it's hard with your back. Maybe, well, I don't want to have you turn your back to the camera either. Just project a little louder.
So the first, I would say, like, three weeks, there was no excavation or sewer pipe installation because the contractor was monitoring and waiting for the groundwater levels to go down in the work area. That was finally achieved, and when they've been able to have good workdays, they've made much better progress than they were last year. At this point, there's somewhere between 100 and 200 feet of new pipe in. I know they've been in front of like 33, 35, and 37 since they've remobilized to the site, but you should be noticing now that some of the dewatering equipment is getting moved further north, including the pipes. The trench is getting paved behind them. When I checked in before coming over this evening, the contractors made it as far as almost to the driveway of 37, which is the north end of that parcel. So fingers crossed that they'll continue to make this steady progress. They did lose a couple week, a couple days last week, Monday and Friday, due to heavy rains. They also, first time it happened on the project, they were unable to work on what would appear to have been a nice weather-wise day because they could not get police details. We tried to push, contractor tried to push, and the bottom line was all the available details in the entire area were going to the Big E. So we should be getting past that also. What we've been trying to do is every couple weeks, because things are going slower than projected, we're distributing by hand to all the residents on that street in the project area, not just the upcoming area, but just to give people a sense of where we're at and what's coming up in the next, it's roughly a three to four week look ahead. We're delivering those. One was just delivered yesterday, so that reflects where we're at right now and where we expect to be in the next few weeks. That pretty much addresses the sewer main, which is, has been referred to in the past as the Phase 1 work. The Phase 2 work is the lift station, and that, aside from the initial clearing and separating or identification of the work area, that has kind of just been silent. The reason for that is in order to deal with the initial excavation work and then the delivery of the lift station itself and unloading it and placing it into the excavation, all that work is going to take up the northbound lane right at the bridge, right at that site. And right now, that site would be too close to the sewer excavation work, which is just up the street, to safely do detours through both of those sites. Based on the current progress that the contractor's been making, I was notified by them that their delivery date for the lift station is the 6th, November 6, and they will be excavating for that to be placed roughly the week in advance of that.
There were plenty of good weather days where there was no work happening out there. This has been really unreasonably delayed, in my opinion, throughout this whole summer. So my question for you now is where do you expect to be at the end of the construction season? Understanding you can't predict exactly when the end of the construction season is, but...
No, well, the state essentially mandates that by, essentially call it Thanksgiving, that excavation work in that road stops. They don't want to get caught with work half done, unpaved over the winter. They are making roughly progress of 100 feet per week, conservatively. So in, what is that, roughly eight weeks, a little less?
I mean, we do, we do have completion dates from you that I believe we're gonna follow, which would be the service lateral being completed by next June.
Yes.
And the pumping station being completed by December of this year. And, and I'm, I'm assuming those dates are gonna be dates that we're gonna make sure that we're committed to.
Hey, at this point, there's no change in those dates that were in those approved change orders.
Do you have anything? Greg?
So when, when you're installing on the north side, you can't like work further up so they, both crews can be working at the same time, or is that the same crew that's gonna be installing on the north side?
It could be different crews, but the way the sewer main, sewer mains typically get laid is moving from the lowest area further north.
You have to systematically stay with that pipe going?
Yeah, to stay, keep the alignment. It's very difficult to go, to hop around.
Mr. Gieler, did you have anything you wanted to add to this regarding the progress and...
No, it, it, this weather, obviously...
You can pull your chair up so you can both look at the mic.
The weather, obviously, that we've been having the last 30 days doesn't help the dewatering system that's been installed. It is, because of that and some of the no work days, it has been a little bit slower than anticipated. We're trying to make up some ground to pick up some time. Keep in mind with Columbus, Monday's holiday, the permit with DOT can't work the Friday before, the Tuesday after the permit. So just an example, with this week, we're shut down in the road Thursday. Friday, we might be there finishing. We're, we're in the middle, tomorrow we're gonna start, I'm gonna use the term hopscotch, the dewatering system further north. So we're gonna drill and put the, the additional wells into the north tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. Friday, we might be off the road. I can't work in the road, I can't have details in the road, can't take a lane. So we might be tying in some piping off the road and getting that pumping system up, which is good with the holiday, because it's not downtime or gaining by running that system. The system, the way, I don't want to get too crazy in depth, but the way it works, it's not something that is set up, installed, turned on, and within eight or 12 hours, it's ready to go. You're basically stabilizing, where you see the pipe along the road with all the small tubes, it's a vacuum system, you're stabilizing in sections. So it takes a little bit of time. It could take two days, three days, four days, it's like an unknown. And then you try to get a certain point with our water level gauge, the gauge in the machine, and then once you start to do the excavation, when we first started, different layers with the clay and the sand, we had to adjust the well points to bring them up a little bit because the water was coming in higher up and the ground was stable. And then further down the trench, the ground wasn't stable and the water went away. So it's, things changed within 20, 30 feet of that section. So it's, it's, it's not fast, and it's also a deep excavation. So that's also, you know, curves why it's a little bit slower than anticipated. But we're trying, and we lost three days last week, we're gonna lose one day this week and two days next week. So these, these things are, are definitely hurt the schedule for, for sure. But I, I mean, I can answer any other kind of questions with that, but we are picking up, it's House 35, is where the, the White House, that's just, that's getting picked up, that'll get restored. The pump's gonna get moved to the north, not sure where they're gonna put it. We're trying to put it in the middle of the system. We're basically running 100-plus feet north and south and keeping the pump central so we can, it's working one side and the other. So the pump will get moved north, so we'll be essentially out of the lawn area of 35, in part of the lawn area of 37, and then hopefully, you know, within a week or so, same thing, we kind of move up and restore as we go. But as of right now, they've buttoned up, picked up, paved, because we can't work on Friday to drill the new wells and keep going, to keep production moving along.
Would you say this first section is the most challenging with the water, because you're gonna be increasing as you go?
Well, a couple different factors that came into play. We set, we set the system and we already installed three to 400 feet of pipe from the south, and it's about 1%, so it's essentially flat. So we had the backfill where the problem with the boiling issue was unstable ground last year. We backfilled, used the sand, sand gravel fill material, which obviously draws the water towards that as well. So it kind of, when we opened that area up, we essentially pulled 90% of the water from the south back into our excavation, because the water's gonna follow the path of least resistance, so it came back, came back to us. So that's why when we set that system, it took a little bit longer to draw it down. In those wells, we can shut them off, we have a water gauge, and we can go down and monitor the depth. And you don't gain feet in days, you're gaining inches. There was a couple days we gained three, four inches, which is, is, is great news, to get it down to that 16-foot elevation. You need the water level in those wells to be at close proximity of the bottom of your excavation to maintain control of the water and stability of the ground.
Do you have anything?
I get it.
Mr. Ruth, you had his hand up first, I'll get to you next.
Yeah, okay. So the problem with the piping is because we gravity so far and we're so deep in the ground, and that's the problem, because we're like 18 feet in the ground with this sewer in front of the 32, 34. We gravitated so far that...
I don't understand the question.
It's deep in the ground?
Yes. But I'm not sure what...
And that's the problem? Because we're so deep?
No, it's the soil, the layers of the soils there that, you've got high groundwater, you've got clay, you've got sand. It, I mean, I, I guess, I'm not an engineer, but if we ran that three feet deep, you might have subsided because the groundwater starts at six feet plus.
Right. Across the street, it's about five, six feet, yeah, with the groundwater.
Can I just ask, did you, did you not know about the soils and how full of the composition was before you started?
There wasn't enough data, that's why this system had to get designed when we ran into the problem last year.
I'm sorry.
In front of 35?
Somebody else has a question, though. Is it quick? Mr. Ruth, you're, is it...
In front of 35 West Street, you, you paved the southbound lane? Why is that? Isn't the sewer on the edge of the road?
No, it's, it's in the lane.
Yeah.
It's in the lane?
Yeah.
Well, I thought it was supposed to be on the edge of the roadway.
I have to, well, the excavation is, is six to seven feet wide, and I need to pave weekly per, per the DOT requirements. There has to be a temp pavement that goes in that stays in place.
All right. Liz Brown, 35 West Street. I'm, I guess I'm glad to hear that you're going to be moving away. I just had some comments. One, at our last meeting, Michael, you said that no equipment would be left on our property. And I realize that the generator for the pump and the water tank are one thing that needed to be where it was, but there has definitely been equipment left. I have pictures of it, and every morning, either Gieler, her contractor, or a cop lets me out. And every morning, either Giller, her contractor, or a cop lets me out of my driveway to go to work, which is great. But, they're not there in the, in the evenings and on weekends. And I have to say, coming out of my driveway, there has been absolutely no visibility at all. And it's just, I pull out a little bit and just hope. If I don't hear a horn, at night, it's easier because you can see headlights coming. But, it has been impossible to get out of my driveway without somebody there, like the cop or the contractors. They've been very good in the morning, I will say, in getting me out pretty quickly.
That would be to the north, right? To the north, you have an issue?
Yeah, traffic coming from the north.
Or actually, both coming, so...
Traffic coming from the north, so, yeah, that's the biggest issue.
I back into my driveway all the time because of snow, sometimes you need to really pull out. So, that has helped a little bit. But, it has been impossible, literally impossible to see anything coming from the north. And, and also, just to point out that, that generator, or the pump, or whatever, it is loud. And every afternoon and evening, all you hear is this low grave, "hurrrr," all the time. And it's, it is just a disturbance, just making the comment.
Could I just ask something?
Yes.
Just, the excavator that you leave every weekend that I've asked again and again, somebody find a place, it isn't just northbound. It's all, I mean, it's not coming from the north, it's also coming from the south. Because it juts out in the road, your barrels are here, and I drive blind to the middle of the road. And if somebody does, I creep out so they can see me when they're even coming north of it. And I've almost, I had an angry driver, I wanted to go into that, they followed me down the road because they thought it was my fault. And I have people that are sometimes very nice, but it's so stressful. And every weekend, I have to go through it all weekend. And I've asked you to put up a snow fence, I've asked you to put up a sign, anything, just to let a driver, make them slow down. I know it's a highway, but they do it on 91 when they narrow to one narrow lane and put things in the road. It should not be that hard for you to ask other traffic to slow down. And it's, it's going to be a fatality someday, because last year, I told you, I almost had a motorcyclist coming at me from a blind spot, I couldn't see anything. And this cannot keep happening, it's absurd, I'm sorry.
So, they did have an assurance that there wasn't going to be equipment left? Is there a way we can make sure that they don't have it left?
So, we're parking the equipment that we're using daily between the dewatering system and, and the white line on the edge of the road. Anything with steel tracks cannot cross into the northbound lane. So, everything, because the southbound lane is getting total restoration. So, we have to give anything with any metal tracks on that side. And I tried to have them stagger it, I mean, we're in a section right now between 35, 37, and the next house, it's extremely tight. I've tried to have them space them out, I can, but I'm trying to minimize how far I stretch it out because I don't want to damage the road in an area that we might not be working in this year, was what I was trying to achieve. I mean, we can move a few things further up, maybe to, what's it, 53 or 51, if that helps to kind of space it out.
I mean, you know, I think they have valid concerns, right, about trying to safely...
Right.
Mrs. Berry, just wait a second, I'll, I'll get to you. You know, they have legitimate concerns and we want to make sure that, you know, things are as safe as possible out there for them.
All the proper signage for road construction is up for the, the permit in the, in the contract documents. So, we, those obligations are met. I can try to move some things further north, so it's a little bit spaced and maybe not so compact. But, I can assure you that the generator and the, the water tank is going to get moved further north because we're moving that, that system up to, starting, I mean, this week, between tomorrow and Friday.
Could I show you?
Yep, sure.
A couple photographs. This is...
This is what our front yard...
I'll get to you next.
Our front yard and our driveway looks like this every day.
I do drive by every day.
The excavator here is parked now at the end of our driveway. And we have little pipes and we have barrels in the road. It's going to be a fatality one day.
Can I see those up close?
Absolutely, I have many more that are more detailed, these I want to just do together for the last minute. This is the end of our driveway plate.
Yep.
That's the pipe that's been very uncovered, at least four pipes that I know of. And these are the other foot that just lined the road.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I come, you know, out of town every morning.
Every weekend, the excavator is at the foot of our driveway, and we can't, I can't see north or south.
So, on, on, Ryan, on those long, like on a weekend, she's talking about this big excavator being parked right at the end of her driveway. There isn't a place you can move that during, for, for, for weekends? It's blocking people's visibility?
I mean, if I got to move it down to the laydown area, I guess we can do that, I'm just trying to, like I said, minimize the amount that we're traveling and just marring up the road. It's kind of what I was trying to avoid.
Susan?
There are structures that they can use, they're called mats. And he could conceivably just put them across the highway and put the machine, if he wants to, across the highway. Then, all he has to do is lay these mats down, they use them all the time.
I just wanted to say that you just said how many days off you're going to have in October, besides weekends. So, that's going to add a lot of time for those machines to be there unless you... Sorry.
Yeah, my understanding is that we're not going back to work until Monday?
Tuesday or Tuesday.
Wednesday, right?
Your crew will be out there tomorrow.
We, we will be working on the dewatering Wednesday this week, Thursday this week, and Fri... I cannot take a lane, use officers, or alter traffic Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, so you're not, you're not using the excavation equipment until Wednesday next week?
They're going to be using some of the excavation, but the large machine for mainline digging will, that will not be used during the dewatering.
Okay, so they, they could be moved away and...
Sure, I'll move the large machine and put it in laydown area till, till Wednesday. The, the smaller backfill machine and the little mini, those are all getting used along with the sweeper and the...
No, I think we can, we can accommodate those, I don't think that's an issue. It's the large excavators that, you know, stick out into the lane and, and, and create the, the sideline blockage that concerns us the most.
I think it's a valid concern and we should really try to do what we can to... I mean, you're out there.
Yeah.
So, I'd be interested to know what you think.
Yeah, I, yeah, as long as the crew knows that that's, that's affecting people pulling out of the driveways, maybe that would help if they just remind them that where they leave their stuff is, you know, guys pulling out of the driveway, they can't see anything. They do need to get helped out in the morning and...
I mean, either, yeah, they, they don't need to be helped regardless because we're taking the lane, so they, you know, and it's...
Yeah, but when you're not there, your equipment is still there and they can't see around it when they're pulling out.
The big excavator was moved today, that's a lot of...
Anybody else?
I just want to apologize, I'm, I'm not trying to attack you, Mr. Giller, I'm just trying to say we've asked for these things for the last three years and they just keep happening. And it's not a surprise that the equipment needs to be moved.
I think these are reasonable requests and I think your feelings are justified, your concerns are justified. Mr. Canton, did you want to add something? Okay. Okay, well, um...
Can I ask a question, please? Mike, you had mentioned, you had referred to the schedule, and the schedule that Michael from your office sent out yesterday goes through November 3rd. Is that when construction will end for the season, or is, do we anticipate working beyond that?
We're just trying to provide that relatively short-term heads-up to people in that next work area. And recognizing that things change, and as you can tell already, we've issued multiple of these. And hopefully, we're on a more predictable path at this point. Now that, as Ryan said, kind of passed that initial groundwater level drawdown. And it's hopefully into more of a steadier, move things further north while it's still dewatering.
Right, maybe as things, if, if it can go a little faster because of the area you're getting to, but also, it's a little less congested where you're progressing to. It might really alleviate a lot of this. So, this might be like the worst part.
I am with all the residents in where it is timewise and, and where we are. Trust me, I want to be in a completely different spot than I am. And/or not even up there this season, having it finished last year. But, there has been some hurdles that we're trying to work through. This, this dewatering system is, it might look very basic and simple when you drive by or see it. It's, there's a lot to it with what's, because we don't know what's going on on the ground. So, you make your assumptions and bases off our test bits and our data that we have. And it's, it's constantly, we're adjusting the valves for the vacuum, you know, hourly, daily. And like I said, it's, I, I spent a Saturday up there doing some stuff. And it, when I started to, when I left, it totally changed, you know, I don't want to go crazy in detail, but it, it changed. And Sunday, you know, we gained six inches from that Saturday at noon till Sunday at 10 o'clock in the morning. So, it's small little tweaks with it, it's, it's not a set it and forget it. So, we're monitoring it seven days a week.
Well, I just want to add that, you know, we do, we do recognize, you know, how disruptive this is to all of you and appreciate you're hanging in there. I'm sorry that, you know, it's been, it's taken this long and it's, you know, I'm, I'm glad that at least at the end, you will have a sewer line. So... Sure.
I spoke to different neighbors and there's trepidation as to whether it's going to work properly. Whether giving up their septic could endanger them if this, if things go wrong in our area, in that end. You know, whether or not the, the system is going to work.
I, I would love to hear the concerns, the specific concerns about why it isn't going to work, because...
I think they have history.
Well, the line is going to be underwater, isn't it?
But it's watertight.
No, it hasn't been leaking.
We're not talking about any, any groundwater infiltration or anything of that nature.
The first installation was leaking. We had to hire a, a company to come in and, and, and cement the leaks. And they're leaking from the outside in. You've got water pressure all around that pipe. If you have a problem, you're down 20 feet or more, you're going to have to have a, hire another company to come in and excavate the whole thing. It's not just going to be an easy, you know, easy fix.
Michael?
There are plenty of sewer mains around the state that are well below groundwater levels. And they work just fine. The goal is to keep the sewage in and the groundwater out. And as part of our process, we test the new mains to make sure that they are in fact tight. Through that process, we did identify, and this does happen, a couple of spots where there were some leaks at the pipe joints. It was not a failure in the pipe itself, in the integrity of the pipe. It does happen occasionally, this is not unique to Giller or to this project. And the remedy was to pressure inject grout around it to create a watertight joint. And we then tested it again, and it met the specs in terms of tightness.
Mike, in the last meeting that you were in?
Yes.
You said you were going to remove the contaminated dirt that was taken out of the ground from the storage area behind our houses.
Well, I was going to look into it, I didn't know at the time whether it was unsuitable material excess or, you know, that was being stockpiled there. And I confirmed with the contractor that that pile is their material that is going to be used as they, for backfill. As they move along with...
In your project?
In, in the sewer trench. So, it will be, so it's, as the project progresses, they will be moving that material truckload at a time to place into the trench.
There's no containment, that's going to get into that field or into the EP area or anything?
No.
It's being in the EP area because your toilet may come through, so, is that okay?
The outhouse?
Yeah.
Porta John? That's in the staging area?
Yeah, there's one there and there's one on the road.
There, there shouldn't be, there's no issue with that.
As you go on the left, I showed you the picture of the EP areas, on the left, the apartment's top over there.
That all needs to get cleaned up as part of finally restoring that area once the project's done.
So, you're going to utilize that area?
On the left as you drive in? No, no, they, there's a, I'm sorry?
We've got things there, that's why I asked you.
As of yesterday, there was not, a few things that got put there and I immediately got them removed. I think there is a portable toilet there and I think they park a vehicle or so there, and that's, that's it. There's no construction debris or equipment there.
Yeah, I'm told that Berkshire Gas is going to move their gas lines off the bridge. That would be onto 32 West Street, but that's where the pump, the sewage, is going to go through. How's that going to work?
They have not told us anything of that nature, and we have been in constant communication with Berkshire Gas about the lift station excavation. They have personnel on-site weekly.
Every month.
To mark out the gas services so that we don't have any incidents like there was in the past.
Yeah, because they're going to move the lines off the bridge because they're going to be doing the bridge over in about five years. So, it's going to come into 32 West Street where the sewage lines are.
That's news to me.
I'm, I'm hoping from this meeting, we can resolve at least a few issues. And the main thing I'm hearing, if I'm correct, is making sure the residents feel safe moving out of their driveways when the contractor's not there and the equipment, and they have visibility. Because that is a highly traveled road, and I don't think anybody should be afraid to, to pull out. They should have at least some kind of visibility. So, I'm hoping you guys will be able to work on that. I appreciate you coming because I know this project's been more challenging than we all thought. But, hopefully, we can keep moving forward, have these so-called painful meetings at times to times to air out the issues and try to resolve a few things for everybody in this project. So, that's, those are my comments from what I'm hearing tonight.
Right, I mean, it sounds like most of the concerns are somewhat easily remedied by moving things and pretty reasonable requests, I think. Anything, Greg?
I think that's great if they can, yeah, take into account just where they park their vehicles, that's pretty easy.
And I think the other complicating factor is that where we've, the contractor has started again this year, is where it got left off last year. So, people in that area have already dealt with all the stuff in front of their yard and such, for such a long time already.
It's been a lot, yeah, it's been a lot.
We just need to get beyond that.
I'd like to just say that, and to Mr. Giller and to anybody else, well, the people working for you are flawlessly polite and they help us in ways, whatever ways they can, they try to direct traffic, there are no police there. I mean, it's just hard because you have to leave 20 minutes earlier to get into traffic, that's not their fault. They're always, you know, very helpful and, and they don't seem resentful of our, our requests when we come out three times because we have to go somewhere. But, as I said, they're not around our weekend, but I just want you to know, they've, they've always been really good, good-natured and hardworking as far as we can tell, so I'm not blaming them and saying they're not working.
That's nice to hear.
My last, my last comment, if you don't mind. Gentlemen, I, I don't know if this is Mr. Roll, your responsibility or Mr. Giller, but could we have a little more communication between, to let us know in advance what's happening? Monday, when I went out, I didn't realize that my driveway was going to be blocked until I got home and found an excavator costing. If you could just, you know, come and knock on the door and say, hey, listen, we're going to, we're going to be blocking, you want to move your cars out? We, we made arrangements with all of our neighbors, and I think all of our neighbors should know that if they need a parking space, they can come to us. You know, but, but it's going to happen and... And, you know, if you can give us a, a day heads up, we can, we can take care of things.
I can certainly make sure our field, Gary Gerard.
Yeah, Gary, yeah, I see Gary for.
Okay.
It goes back to the very beginning of communication. That's, that's the key.
I think they could also just be careful where they leave their barrels when they go. I came home one night and couldn't pull in my driveway. I had to stop the car and get out and move the barrels so I could pull it into the driveway. They left it literally right in the middle of the pocket. It, not a big deal. It was sort of a chuckle, but it'd be nice if it didn't have.
Hopefully, very soon, it'll be just passed. It'll be passed and, yeah, yes. Thank you for coming, everybody. Good questions, I appreciate it. Did you want to take your pictures back? Your, your pretty poster?
I mean, yesterday we had literally all day long, the excavator was there and it dug up the whole bottom of our driveway. So like very little notice because the night before we had to go over to our neighbors and park.
I do, too.
Over here, so we can't walk there.
Right.
So this, I had to be guided by one of the workers through the, like, crud to get around to my neighbors. So I went all the way around this section of the structure.
It's been a lot, I know.
It has been a lot of stress. I don't blame you guys. I just think that, I, I would like you to set up regular meetings instead of having me call because, I mean, everybody else is, and I'm thinking, you're all having the same thing. You call. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to, our, our only thing now is an executive session, right? So we have to adjourn to an executive session? Correct. So somebody needs to make that motion.
I don't have that thing to read.
It's topic on the agenda, topic four, there's a.
At the bottom.
This one right here, Greg. You just make that motion.
I make a motion under Mass General Chapter 38, 21A, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation of an open meeting. May have detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares.
And will not be coming back.
Will not be coming back.
I second that. Jaworski, aye.
Zinal, aye.
Aye, gangnam.
Thank you, John.